Roger Bartz, please.
Oh, I didn't do it. I'll pick it up. Roger Bartz, 7922 Manor Gate Street, Lewis Center. Thank you for letting me be here and thank you for not having a body mask index requirement for your speakers. I'm a 14-year resident of the district. I've been involved with the Olentangie Orange Athletic Boosters since our inception in 2007. I'm recently coming off serving two years as president of that organization, vice president the year before those two, and I'm currently the vice president again for this upcoming year. I've also just made a commitment to our board that I'll remain on as long as turf is on. As you may have guessed by now, I'm in this for the long haul. I'm dedicated to supporting the needs of our student athletes. So I'll be direct. OOAB supports turf. Our board voted last night unanimously to increase our portion of the financing package, reducing and taking no district money. So as you saw from Mike's slides, the Olentangie Orange Athletic Boosters are committed to well over $400,000. The sports that we have, we use these fields, boys and girls soccer, boys and girls lacrosse, field hockey, football, band, support from baseball and softball, and our general community. And this is just a cross-section of our dedicated membership, just from the boosters of over 600 parents and student athletes, just in the immediate families. Since our inception, as Mike mentioned, OOAB and our thousands of volunteer parents and supporters have raised over $2 million. We are an organized and established group with one single purpose, which is to provide for our student athletes those items that the district cannot or will not. Overall, OOAB takes this obligation seriously. We've already provided the board with our balance sheets and financials since our inception. We have an open book policy and will have, continue to have with the district during the term of this project. And our OOAB team is dedicated to carrying our share of the load. Already, OOAB has formed small working groups to identify and develop additional sustainable fundraising opportunities to allow us to retire our portion of the debt early. Our sports who are contributing to this project are also doing the same. We intend to retire our debts in five to six years or sooner if possible. And that is our part of showing good faith to the board and to the taxpayers and the community. Make no mistakes, these fields will be community assets for years to come. So I would like to ask the board to support this project. Please don't be swayed by the recent level of misinformation and rampant negativity that seems to be everywhere. Social media has no limits to the depth of misconception and apologizes to no one for its content. Facts go to social media to die. OOAB and our turf supporters do not make threats of non-support for future levies. OOAB does not make threats to not vote for board members who do not support this project. OOAB is not angry with any of our supporters or our community members who do not want to contribute or support turf. OOAB is not a political group with an agenda to only support those who think like us. OOAB has a mission, regardless of the outcome of this vote. And we will continue to be positive and carry on that mission for the betterment of our children. OOAB only presents facts that are true. These facts are simple. We are financially sound and able to carry this project forward with the cooperation of our friends at Poparts and the positive focus supporters of the Olentangie local schools. We have demonstrated revenue streams. We have a positive history. We are the ones who will be paying for the lion's share of this project, and we do this gladly. Please hear us, please approve this project because we gotta get to work. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Abraham, Bud Abraham, if you would, please.
Bud Abraham, Stormhaven Court here in Lewis Center. You have to apologize for my voice, I got cold. I've asked the board and people in the audience to do a little visual imagery for me. Close your eyes and think about that eight-year-old high-efficiency washer and dryer that you have at your house. Or that five-year-old car that you drive gets you back and forth to work. Gets your kids to school, drops them off, runs errands. The other thing is, what about that two-year-old set of golf clubs? Works great, but wait a minute, it's the guy holding the end of the stick that makes it go wrong. Now I want you to visualize those athletic fields. Is there anything wrong with those? Is there any ponding of water? Is there any break, you know, cracks in the side? Is there anything? Is there anything typically really wrong with that?
No.
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 I want my time back. Anytime I'm losing, I want it back.
Sir, let's not engage the audience.
The point here is, compared to the washer and dryer, the vehicle and the golf clubs, the athletic fields do not need to be replaced or upgraded at taxpayer expense, which you're asking us to do, or asking the school to do to be a bank. Essentially, that's what's going on. You're here to educate and to provide an avenue for athletics. Now, the other fatal flaw to this whole thing is their timeline. According to the resolution, you want this completed by the 16th of August. It is eight weeks, eight workday weeks, starting tomorrow. You haven't let out any bids. You haven't gotten a crew together. You haven't selected which turf to use. According to FieldTurf, it's a six-to-eight week installation process. So assuming you take a week to let out bids and get them received and approve them, the crew takes a week to get here. Guess what? You're at an end-to-end fit. You have two days of slack. Being a project manager, I'd have to go to my management and say, something's gotta move. Either you gotta give more money to pay him overtime, or you gotta push up the end date, or minimize the project. So really, this has got more flaws in it than one can imagine. So I'm asking you to really think, is this a need or a wish? And I see it as a wish. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin wants to make a clarifying statement.
On the bids, the fields were bid once and we rejected those bids at the... Maybe?
Yes.
So they've actually been out to bid again, and those bids are due on Wednesday. For exactly the reason why Mr. Abraham raised, if we want to extend that we're successful or the project continues, we wanted to make sure we were prepared for that kind of timeline. So the bid issue has been addressed meanwhile.
Keith, are you turning the screen on? Thank you. Ms. McDowell, Tracy McDowell, please, if you would, join us.
I'm Tracy McDowell. I live at 393 Ashmore Circle East in Powell. I'm an 11-year resident of the district with three children currently in schools. I'm a member of the Olentangie Finance and Audit Committee and a CPA. Part of my responsibility as a committee member is to review the annual budget and five-year forecast. We ask questions of Olentangie's treasurer's office, challenge the assumptions that are the basis for the numbers in the budgets. It's a very collaborative, productive process between the treasurer's office and community members that have financial expertise. Our discussions contribute to the most accurate forecast and financial budgets possible. I absolutely support the turf concept in the Olentangie stadiums, and I greatly appreciate the hard work that the turf committee has put forth in fundraising. I respectfully ask that the school board delay incurring debt and committing potential taxpayer dollars to an initiative that has not been presented to the finance committee or to the community at large. Both would welcome the opportunity to provide insightful comments and suggestions to help make this goal a reality. I've heard a lot of numbers thrown around anecdotally about what has been collected and what's been pledged, and whether or not any taxpayer dollars would be needed. Differing information prompted me to clarify with a school board member who stated that a minimum of $360,000 would not be repaid to the district even once all collections were made. We heard tonight that just last night that number was reduced. I am also concerned that even with the best efforts and intentions, the district has the risk of taxpayer dollars if collective contributions fall short of the projections. Again, I support the turf committee's good work. I realize that my request to delay incurring debt at this point likely would prevent the installation of turf by mid-August as the committee desires. However, important financial decisions should not be rushed. I will do whatever I can personally and as a member of the finance committee to help the turf committee achieve their goals. I want to see them successful. In the end, I believe that you may actually gain support for the turf initiative and the district as a whole if you follow a path of review that is transparent and well-communicated. When taxpayer dollars are at stake, as they are in this situation if we are taking out a loan, fiscal responsibility is imperative. I fear that we risk much bigger losses if the community views the district as not being fiscally responsible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Hellwick, Brian Hellwick, please.
Good evening. My name is Brian Hellwick. I'm at 9782 Oxford Circle, Powell, Ohio. I have a seven-year-old, four-year-old, since moved to Powell about two years ago. And I'm the one who's ultimately responsible for your mailbox is filling up. About 48 hours ago, I wasn't as popular. I didn't use social media. What I did simply was put out a very, very, very simple petition and said, "Hey, put in your comments, hit the submit button, and let the board know how you feel about the current situation." I had a speech all drawn up, and I was gonna sit down and talk about the costs, things associated in fiscal and financial responsibility, and please turn it down and take it to a vote. I still stand behind turning it down and taking it for a vote. What I don't understand is, when I was in school, not that long ago even, I looked like a little liar. We had a B average in order to play. And I went in Pennsylvania. We had reading boosters. So we didn't have to have laws like Senate Bill 316 that I had the opportunity to read last night as it came across Twitter. And I watched and said, wow, this is amazing. We don't measure kindergarten first and second and third grade. We wait four years to find out that a kid can't read. So I ask you to take a look at the budget, and if they have the money that they need, then let them pay cash. That's what I do. I wait. I hold, I save, I become, it's my choice, my budget. I execute, and I get what I want. With Senate Bill 316, it's a classic example of an outside force, like a law, coming in that may impact our operational budget, force us to have longer days, longer weeks, longer years, additional training. I'd love to see every third grader read. And I'd love to see the money that we have sitting here go for that purpose. I think that I'm gonna go ahead and let the taxpayers speak for themselves. I printed off every email for you guys that was sent on my own, and a summary is attached with every signature. I think the only two that are on here, which are quite interesting, is one guy from Pennsylvania, apparently who's a little confused.
I'm from Pennsylvania.
The second one that I thought was very interesting was the guy from Greece who said, "Please don't do what we do." So I'll pass this off to the board. Thank you very much for your time and consideration. I know that sports in my family are an extracurricular activity because maybe a half a percent of children go on to play college, and maybe a half of those go on to play professional sports. My kids need to be well-educated to go to college, to compete against Pennsylvania, to compete against the other 49 states, to compete in a global economy where we are currently number 25 in reading, writing, and arithmetic, behind India. So I look at it and I say, where do I want my money to go? To my kids' future. So you're gonna be the best baseball player? I hope so. Well, I encourage them for sure. But at home, sports comes second. The education comes first because the education will take them further, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. We are at our half-hour limit, but we do have several here, so we will extend this for another period. So Ms. Nielsen, Kathy Nielsen, if you'd join us, please. I'm sorry, Kirby, I'm sorry. I needed to adjust my glasses.
My handwriting is deteriorating. I can't tell if I deteriorated. I'll get back to that penmanship. Actually, my sixth-grade teacher worked on with me. And I remember, her name was Mrs. Driller. I won't go there. Thank you. My name is Kirby Nielsen. I live at 7408 Falls View Circle in Delaware. First of all, I thank you for your service. I know it's not easy for your city. You get a lot of divergent point of views. I had just a few little comments to make tonight. Everybody else has made my comments so much better than I ever will. So I'm just gonna affirm, I do oppose the turf project. My basis is not on all the sophisticated financial analysis and things. I'm not so good at that anymore. But just that I'm disabled on a fixed income. I think these things do affect people like myself. Every little dollar that's spent maybe in the wrong direction is a dollar that's hard to recover. And so I just want the best use for my tax dollar. And I don't think the turf improves the education. I think it might be good for athletics and support athletic things. And I don't think it has a direct correlation to improving education. So I think it's really kind of just a misappropriation of our dollars. I like a lot of people. I would support this project. I'd say would help them however we can if not to use school board dollars. So I would ask you to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hunker, Ann Marie Hunker, please.
Not as well prepared as anyone else, but I have a lot to say. I'm Ann Marie Hunker. I live at 1979 Roundwood Lane in Powell, Ohio. First, I'd like to thank you for your service, having an opportunity to do that in person. And I write to each and every one of you regarding my support for the turf project. And I've heard back from all students, so I appreciate that. I'm a 15-year resident of the school district. I have two children that have already graduated, and I have two daughters that were named in the school system. Anecdotally, I have my two children that have graduated, went out the door at Olentangie Local Schools with 42 college credits. Okay? If I take $1,000 for each credit, which is small compared to what I'm paying, say the $42,000. Okay? That's six years, six full years of my tax dollars. So I've got that, I'm equal for six years for my children because of the excellent first-class education that we get at Olentangie Schools. I'm here because of the first-class education. But I don't believe education is just the classroom. I believe it's having a well-rounded community of support. And that includes extracurriculars, that includes the circus club, that includes the art club, the music club, and that includes athletics. I am here for a first-class education, and I, assuming, I want first-class athletic facilities. I am co-president of the Field Hockey Boosters at Olentangie Liberty. And I know you guys are worried about everybody paying back their money. I'm a CPA. I'm a chief accounting officer. And I'm also a real estate executive. And you people who are worried about your homes, well, part of this decision is our home values. And you think this adds to the home values. It doesn't detract from it. People come to Olentangie Schools for first-class things, first-class education, first-class athletics, first-class extracurriculars. So this helps our home values, so it helps everybody in the room. And it is really even taking 100% of our tax dollars. We're getting a gift here. And you're worried about people funding it. But the field hockey group, which consists of 25 players, we have already raised $10,000 of our $40,000 amendment in one year. We've already done it. I can give you the money tomorrow. So you're hearing all this stuff and hearing that it's taxpayer dollars. I want to pay. This is not a burden. I want to pay for this as a taxpayer. Assuming some of you don't, I do. This is democracy. I did not vote for Obama, but he's my president, and I have to live with that. So we have a democracy here, and tonight you've heard, you know, the people, the naysayers. But you've also gotten representation from people who are in favor of it. This is a democracy we have here. And there's gonna be some for and some against. And many of us are for, I'm for it. I think it's great for my home value. I think it's great for my resale value, not let alone my children's education. So this is a taxpayer burden, which, number one, I believe will pay it back because there's a lot of energy behind it. But number two, I want this. I want this burden. There's some burdens, as I wrote to Mr. White, that I don't enjoy paying for. I do not enjoy paying for step increases in Bill 316. I wish I had protections around my job every day that some teachers are going to get because of this. But this is not a burden to me. This is a community asset that I, if you ask me, I would vote to pay for. And I don't think we're even having to pay for it. My voice is a little shaky here, so...
Yeah, one minute.
So I said I wasn't prepared, but I have a lot to say. So anyways, I'm urging you to support, vote for the turf project.
Mr. Stout, Dave Stout, if you would join us, please.
Thank you for allowing me a few minutes to speak. I'm Dave Stout. I live on Stormhaven Court in Orange Township. Couple of disclaimers before I start, if I may. I have a son who's attorney in practices in Central Iowa. Some of you may know him. He represents the school district on some occasions at a fee base. My opinions do not reflect anything he thinks or wants. I told him I was gonna be here. He said, "Please don't do it." I said, "Please pay my taxes," and the conversation. The other thing is that I am the voice, the ongoing voice of the football Orange pioneers on Friday night. My opinions here do not reflect any of that either. I don't know whether I support or do not support our official turf. I sit in the press box, and those kids play awful hard on both. I've done both on our official turf and grass. They're gonna play as hard as they want, as long as they want, until the clock runs out. But I am unhappy with the funding program that I've read in various rags. This one today has another one, and one I've read in other ones. Let me give you a couple of examples of why I don't think you should become involved with funding. I am a loan officer and operations manager for my own mortgage company. You may have closed a loan on refinance or buying a house recently. You may have been scheduled on Wednesday, and you didn't go to Friday because of some hangup. There's a reason for that. We know that that last piece of paper and underwriting is not signed properly, documented properly. But once you close and once you go happily on your way, we will never get it. It will stop right there. We will chase you down, whoever you are, and we will not get that piece of paper signed. Ergo, that loan may not be saleable, depending on Mayor Freddie Mac or some other institution. The other thing is a real, real on-hand experience that I had at the Toledo Zoo. I graduated 100 years ago from Toledo, Deville's High School. We were the Tigers, we were the cake eaters, and we are a tradition of excellence. We were the school in Toledo. Toledo Public Schools closed, they had a school in 1991. I had a 40th reunion, you can do the math, in 2000. And three or four of us had a little bit too much to drink among the 300 and got a little giddy and decided that we ought to do something somewhere in Toledo to represent our high school. We had seven of us doing conference calls after the reunion on June 10th. On June 30th, I met with another classmate, with Bill Denler, the executive director of the Toledo Zoo, expecting to get a little plot of land here. He gave me 1,000 square foot at the zoo next to the live Tigers to do what we wanted to do. We had to do it through him and do what we wanted to do. And one of the things that he required was, we were living it in three years, and we were gonna raise $200,000 bucks in three years from only alumni, friends of alumni, or family alumni, no company contributions. It was a true Deville's Tiger alumni class. And we had plans. We did everything. I spent three out of four Thursdays for 37 months in Toledo. When we got close to the 100,000 mark that we had given them on the date, I had been there on Thursday, got home, there was a voicemail. "David, I need to talk to you. You need to come here." I was just there, "Bill, you need to be here tomorrow morning." "Bill, I was just there on Thursday." Friday morning, I went up, he says, "You're not gonna make it. We gotta cancel this." I said, "I agree. $20,000 bucks short of the 100,000 mark." I looked at him, and I said, "Can you help?" He said, "Absolutely not. This is your project. You are raising the funds. You have not met this." And I said, "Well, let me make a couple of phone calls." We had a couple, a couple of very wealthy alumni involved with this. And so I went back to him and I said, "We will underwrite this. We will give you letters of underwriting, and we will, we will give you bank statements, bank authority, that we will get this completed if we don't make our number."
Yep, one minute.
We made our number. We made our number. We didn't have to do that. But Bill Denler was a public institution. He was executive director for 25 years at the Toledo Zoo. And he said, "No, I'm not going to fund this because I know that once I fund it for you, the balance, your intensity will go down. Your intensity for getting this project done will go down the drain, and I will play hell getting all the money out of you and your people." I think that'll happen here. I think you've had some great guys with great enthusiasm. I think once those kids are playing on our official turf and it's in place, the enthusiasm for raising the money will go down. And you are not in the business of throwing money to boosters. It takes them five years. It takes them five years. I applaud you for allowing them to do it and to come to you with their project, but please do not fund any part of the project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Solomon, please.
Excuse me, can I just ask one thing? I'm borderline diabetic, and I can feel my sugar dropping. And I don't wanna get up here and pass out. If it'll be okay with you. I would probably go ahead.
Sure.
I appreciate the thought.
Sure.
Thank you so much. I'm sitting here, my stomach growls.
And the name, please.
My name is Lynn Dill. I live at 7886 South Old State Road, Lewis Center. And I'm gonna try to speak without getting tongue-tied. This is the first time I've ever stood up and talked before people. But I really feel strongly about this. I'm gonna try to talk without my notes, but I have them here just in case. But I really just wanna talk from the heart. Back so long ago, 'cause I'm apparently the oldest person in here, when my son first started growing TNG, I was a classroom volunteer. I was in the third or fourth grade. And at that time, the entire school was in this building. And back there somewhere, there were modulators. I think that's what they called them, was modulators. And there were, I don't know, maybe a half a dozen, four, five, six classes that met in modulators. I was assigned as a teacher's assistant helper in one of the modulators. And I went in there, and I would look around and kinda get creeped out because there was one exit, and there were no fire extinguishers. So one called the person who had been present, or the, I'm sorry, the principal, and said, "You know, I'm concerned about this. I'm concerned about our kids. I would be willing to buy fire extinguishers for these modulators. And if that, for some reason, would not be allowed, maybe we could ask the PTO to pay for them, to provide the modulators with the fire extinguishers." I'll never forget what the president said. I thought I was being brilliant, and I thought I was being generous. And the principal said, and I won't forget it, but I'm gonna read it. "All of the teachers at Olentangie would walk through the fire to protect any one of their students. That is what is called good intentions." I had heard lots of positive things about the teachers at Olentangie, but I had never heard that they were fireproof, and I had never heard that they were oblivious to pain. So I think what I said was, nah-uh. The fire extinguishers appeared, and the reason that the fire extinguishers appeared is because it was the right thing to do. Good intentions would not have put out a fire. Good intentions would not have saved a single child. And good intentions will not pay for this, I call it AstroTurf. It's not gonna pay for it. It might, but there's no guarantee there. Things come up all the time. That is the very definition of foreclosure. If you drive around the neighborhood... of foreclosure. If you drive around the neighborhood and look, if you drive around our district and look, there are a lot of foreclosure signs. That's something I never saw in my life until maybe five years ago. There are, there are foreclosures, there are share of sale, and it's because things came up. When the people took out the loan for those homes, they had every good intention. They had every good intention of paying for their home. Things come up. People lose jobs. Prices go up. People don't get the promotions they're expecting to get. I don't doubt for an instant that the booster club and the corporate sponsors and any potential donors are filled with truly good intentions. I don't doubt that one bit. I believe that they believe the promises that they're making and they're certain that nothing is going to come up. We deserve, we taxpayers deserve something better than that. We deserve something more solid than that.
You have one minute.
Okay. We deserve, I'm going to read them since I have, we have one minute. We deserve concrete proof that down the road, we aren't going to be hit with a levy to pay for this AstroTurf. We deserve cash in hand or at the very least collateral. Maybe the coaches, maybe the boosters would like to put their houses up as collateral and then you would know that these things were going to be paid for. I'm guessing that's not going to happen because deep down, all of us know that things come up. I don't want there to be the most remote chance that down the road, we're going to be faced with a levy to pay for AstroTurf because good intentions weren't enough, because things came up. And lastly, I want to say on a public forum, since I seem to have the time, I and a lot of other people voted and went into this lion's den. And I just want to praise you. I, I don't know how, I know that all of you work very, very hard, but it's been a bit of an unpleasant atmosphere for you at times. And I just want to take, thank you for your, for knowing your issues, for your patience, your perseverance at coming into the lion's den over and over. You're awesome.
Carl Salmon, 2135 Sherborn Lane, Liberty Township. I heard the speakers tonight and I heard the comments and I heard the commitments that some people have made to cover the cost of this project. I, like many people, are very skeptical about those claims. I don't believe that the donations are going to cover the cost of this project, aside from the fact that many residents do not feel this artificial turf is needed. There's also the issue of ongoing maintenance and replacement costs, which will be substantial and which will not be covered, I don't think either, by these private contributions. Moreover, there will be a need to replace this artificial turf, according to the experts, after only eight or nine years. Who will bear that cost? If we can't raise enough private contributions to guarantee this project and pay for it directly without a loan from the school district, what makes anyone think that you will be able to get private contributions to cover the cost, which will undoubtedly be higher eight years from now? I don't hear anybody from the board or the superintendent asserting that ongoing maintenance costs and future replacement costs are guaranteed to be covered by private contributions. What we see in this district, which already has an interest expense of roughly $20 million a year, is considering taking on more debt. This reminds me of the financial practices of the country of Greece. Once again, a small group of people is driving a major cost project which has nothing to do with improving academic achievement, which doesn't benefit the overwhelming majority of taxpayers and residents and which the district cannot afford. As I noted back in March, in the March meeting, this project was originally justified by some manufactured survey the superintendent has told us was circulated to his coffee pledge group. Aside from the fact this survey was apparently sent only to a handpicked group to get the result Dr. Lucas and certain members of this board wanted, there were apparently no security safeguards, so people could vote as often as they wanted. Even more ridiculous, the survey link was able to be passed to people outside the district who could vote on the turf project, like certain employees of Olentangie Local School District that don't live in Olentangie Local School District. I guess when more than half of your employees live outside the district, giving them access to such a survey helps you get the results you want. So members of the board, let's not perpetuate the myth that this artificial turf is something the residents of this district are clamoring for. It is not. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Mr. Torgerson, Alan Torgerson, do you want, please?
My name's Alan Torgerson, 2601 Charles Street. It's the first time I've ever been in a school board meeting. I look forward to come back. It's been a enlightening experience for me. I appreciate all that y'all do. My exposure to this point has been reading the newspaper. I've known some individuals that served on the school board in the past, but never came. I'm grateful to live in this country because we have opportunities to do this, to express our opinions and then leave it in the hands of people who have been voted into office to represent us. I'm not opposed to turf in principle, but I try to live by principles in my home. I try to teach my children to live by good principles. And one of those is to discern between needs and wants. I'm not opposed to spending money on wants, but I am opposed to going into debt, to, to fund things that aren't critical. Like I said, I'm not opposed to buying things that aren't critical, but when I have cash to do it. We're in a country right now that's facing financial difficulties. We've heard about Greece. We hear about Spain. We hear about homes that are being foreclosed on in this country, in this community. And in every case, without exception, it's because they had good intentions, but they didn't have the funds they needed at the time. They funded habits, this shouldn't have been funded. So, I express my opinion that I would love to see turf on the fields. I had a chance as a high school student in Texas to march on turf fields. It was phenomenal. I liked it. It was great. But why would we want to tell our children it's okay to fund desires when you don't have the money to do it? If it's so important, let's raise the money, put it in turf fields next year. But let's get the money in hand so that we're not going into debt to do something that is not a critical need. Again, I'm not opposed to turf. I think it would be fantastic. Would it help my home value? Possibly. I don't know that I'd be able to attach a specific value in my home increase to it. Would I be able to attach a decrease in my home value to it? I doubt it. I don't know. But there's a principle mistake and that is, don't go into debt for things that are not critical. Save up and then pay cash for it. This is one of those opportunities for us to do the right thing, I think. Again, I appreciate your service. I hope that we have turf someday, but I hope that we don't go into debt to do it because we have an opportunity to teach our children. And I cannot think of a more powerful thing to do than sit down with a child. I have six children, all of them in this, well, three and four in the school district that starts next year. I look for opportunities to teach my children good principles that will guide them into adulthood. This is one of those. There are many others. I hope, I hope that we follow good principles. And when we have the money, let's do it. Let's do a good thing. But if we don't have it, let's wait. Thank you.
Thank you. As we did at the beginning of the meeting, we will now, we will now have a board discussion regarding the turf proposal. So, with that, would somebody like to begin a discussion? Any points that you'd like to make?
I'd be glad to. And I wrote it out so that I didn't forget anything. Let me start by saying thank you to all the parents that are here and thank you for expressing your opinion in the 300 or so emails we've gotten over the last few days. I am completely in support of turf. I believe it's a wonderful community asset and it's the obvious next step in Olentangie's drive for excellence. I think it would allow us to compete at a higher level and save the district money on maintenance and be a new revenue stream for the district. The turf committee has given an inordinate amount of time and energy to try to make this a reality and I thank them for their dedication to this district and to the community. What I do not support is the current financing plan for turf. When it was first proposed to us, it was going to be a gift to the district, a no-brainer. What instead has morphed into is the district taking out a million dollar plus loan and relying on pledges to pay the money back. While I do really trust that the booster clubs will indeed follow through on their commitments, the district's signature is the only one on the loan. And ultimately, the taxpayers are liable for the debt. There's no legal reassurances that the money must be paid back and eight years is a long time and we'll see many leadership changes in the boosters, the administration, and even the board. Trust me, it's been a difficult couple of weeks. I have people that I love, trust and respect on both sides of this argument. This has become such a toxic divisive issue to this point where I have friends letting me know that there'll be hell to pay if I don't vote the way they want me to. But I'll follow through on my commitment when I ran for office, transparency and communications and being a good steward of taxpayer dollars. To the turf supporters, if you truly believe this is a community asset, then I have to believe that it will remain that in a year when you've been able to raise the funds without this level of district intervention. I do not buy the argument that this is the most important thing for this community unless, of course, it doesn't happen in the next eight weeks. This new proposal somehow managed to come up with $360,000 in less than 48 hours. I can only believe that with more time, you can raise the money necessary to fund the turf as originally designed and communicate plans to the entire community. To the people that are anti-turf, I think there's a whole lot of misinformation out there and misunderstanding about how this process came to be. No one on this board, in this administration, supported a clandestine campaign to hide anything from this community. The people attempting to put this together have had nothing but the best intentions in this drive for completion. For those of you on both sides of this issue that threaten to not vote for the levy, I'm really disappointed. Sorry. Now I get emotional. I'm disappointed. All of those letters started out with pledging your undying devotion to Olentangie District and the children in it, but every single one of them ended with a promise to vote against the levy if you didn't get what you wanted out of this vote. It's disheartening that you'd ultimately punish the district and the children in it, the kids you profess to be so devoted to. For those of you that know me, and there are many of you that do, my votes are always based on two things. Can I explain my rationale for my vote to my children? And can I sleep well at night knowing that I've made a decision that aligns with my values and conforms with the fiscal and fiduciary responsibilities of being a board member? I can tell you I did both of those last night.
Thank you, Stacy. Somebody else like to speak?
Sure, that was good, Stacy. We don't usually agree on most things and that was well put. First, I spoke with the turf committee on the phone and I have great admiration for all the fundraising you've done and networking. And I said it was, that I could definitely use you guys, a couple of weeks ago when we had the union contract up, in order to cut the cost. And that's my fault for not asking you people for doing that, having that kind of intensity. I can't fund it financially with taking on more debt when we're already hundreds of million dollars in debt. And I hope you guys get the cash, bring it back and we'll get the, get the fields. I mean, fundraisers at the high school, you know, the high school kids who do the athletics. Because you've raised so much money already, I think that it wouldn't be hard if you guys just went at it for a couple of months and did that over the summer and held events. But bring back the cash and we've got no problem because we don't have to co-sign a loan or sign it on our own. There's nothing against anybody. I'm an athlete. It's the last thing I'll say in my entire life. And I said that to you on the phone, to Jim Chicarella. So there are no hard feelings. It's just pure financial, so.
Thank you, Adam.
I'll go. So, you know, in terms of where I am turf, I have been and continue to be a supporter of the project. I, I too am encouraged and admire the progress done by the turf committee. They have worked, and I can attest in this particular, in the last two weeks, a ton of hours trying to work a structure and a strategy that gets accomplished what we really want to get accomplished. And to me, it's not about turf being a luxury. It's about an opportunity to increase the usage of our fields and better optimize the facilities we have. We've made significant investments in those facilities that we can enhance, generate new revenue streams and find new ways to enhance the experience of our students and frankly, of the community. I also believe that they've put together, frankly, a plan that would work. And they've made adjustments to that plan to address community concerns. Specifically, I know these happen quickly and as this evolves, but we've removed the use of bond residuals from the district cash from the plan. We've included a funding plan for field replacement down the road. The plan always included taking maintenance savings, non-labor maintenance savings in the replacement fund. We had the replacement strategy in place. We developed detailed business plans by the respective booster organizations to support their funding commitments. I think there's a perception out there that our booster groups run a couple bake sales and raise a couple thousand dollars and away they go. These are very sophisticated organizations that raise in excess of $500,000 per year in some of these organizations. The commitment to turf in some, some organizations represents 10 to 12% to 20% of their revenue stream. So, the burden on the funding mechanism to pay the debt is in essence 20 cents on the dollar. And if they'll continue to serve the community as they have, they've in essence made a priority decision on how they want those dollars spent. And the district, by borrowing the money, is lending, in essence, its balance sheet to the booster group to help facilitate that in a more cost-effective manner. When we looked at a loan for the booster groups on their own with the field as collateral, the interest rate went up 4%. And that's 400 basis points on, fairly sizable number. And that put an incredible burden and stress on those finances. In addition, these groups have also put and have been open to specific provisions to help give the district protection. We talked a lot about what would happen if we had a default and how would we remedy that. And I think we've got opportunities to probably continue that dialogue. So, in terms of where I am, I'm willing to continue to work and continue to, to find a structure and a strategy that, that makes sense and frankly, can achieve the objective of upgrading those facilities and getting more use of the facilities we have and doing it in a cost-effective manner, which I believe the current plan does, but I think we continue to train on it to make it better.
Thank you, Kevin. Julie?
I'm still waiting for the million dollar donation for a math program. So, if anyone wants to step up, you know, for that. But I appreciate all of the input that I have received and I tried to get back to everybody. But like today, I lost my internet connection and wasn't able to follow up with the last few emails that I got today. I requested input on this difficult decision because I felt that there was a lot of misinformation out there. And I wanted to give everyone the same information that I had at that time. I want to be clear that I understand the passions of each side of this issue. And like Stacy said, it's kind of disheartening when people are threatening lack of support in the school district that will, it won't hurt me because my kids are getting out of here, but it'll hurt the kids that are coming in after my kids. And I've worked too hard for this district since 1997 to get all of these excellent banners on the wall. So, that is the most disheartening thing that has come out of this, this process. I appreciate all of the work done by the turf committee and I believe that they will meet their commitments. I didn't stop paying for my house just because I moved into it. I continue to make those payments, just like anyone would for a house or a car. So, I've worked with these people. I believe that they will come through with their commitments. I also like the idea that Holly Hansen talked about and that sense of community. My husband and his family actually went to this school and I started coming here to this district in 1984. And I can tell you that I still feel that same sense of community because my kids have had some of the same teachers that he was able to have here at Olentangie. My brother-in-law actually took a job transfer to get his kids back into this school district. So, I want to preserve that sense of community as well because I, I really believe in this community. Just for transparency purposes, yes, my husband is a coach, but he does not support the turf proposal as it stands. He believes, and this is just for transparency, that we should wait until all of the money is at hand. And he and I disagree on a lot of issues. So I will just put that out there. And I also want to be transparent and say that, yes, I do have a nephew who plays football, but his football field where he came from was condemned by the Virginia State Referees Commission. And so the field that he has playing on now is fine with him, although he would love to play on turf. So I want to put that out there as well. We heard a new proposal tonight and I think that needs We heard a new proposal tonight, and I think that needs to be vetted. I think that has a lot of, I think that might be able to work for us. I have, when I was president of the school board, I always talked about compromise and collaboration, and that's what I would like to see here, to preserve that community feeling that we have. One thing though that struck me, and I just wrote this down, and we have one of our soccer boosters here, was I didn't hear anything from Olentangy. And we were at the school board meeting, and I mean Olentangy High School, and we were at the booster meeting on Monday night, and it seems like they have kind of been left out of the decision process. So, I think that Olentangy High School needs to be involved as well, but I think that they have a strong booster group as well. I mean, their friends at football voted to support this issue, but I need to see a more detailed information from them. And I don't know that they have been informed that this change in plan, so they need to be informed as well. I do support the turf issue, but I think that we can vet this process better and come up with a compromise that will work for the community. And I realize that when you come up with a compromise, that both sides still have issues, but if you, as you saw in our new education bill, 316, that was not the same education bill that was proposed by the governor at the beginning. That went through a lot of vetting, a lot of input, and now we have the bill that stands before us. And I think that we can have a process here that can get us to that same place. I think that we can get it to a compromise position that both sides can live with, not be both 100 percent happy, but I would, in my support of turf, I would like to see a compromise worked out.
Thank you, Julie. This is a very complex and multi-layered proposal, discussion, issue, condition. Now, my professional career, I have always applied because what I do for a living is also multi-layered and extremely complex and extremely expensive work. I'm always looking at the abstract values equally with the pragmatic values, and I think you have to consider them all in a total context. We must look at this comprehensively as the Olentangy School District. For me, there is one single overarching goal, and that is a successful levy, an appropriate levy in May of 15, as is currently being proposed. I want to remind everybody, when we were going through the process of coming to the election of May of 11 for our last levy that was successful, there was a campaign promise or pledge by those who were promoting the levy, and as we decided that the board should be fiscally responsible of a three-year pledge. And I think it's important to never forget that. Subsequently, later in that year, the board at that time determined, along with the superintendent as his, at his lead, that we're going to make that last four years. And I think that is significant. There is a lot of work yet to be done, even though significant progress has been made in capturing that goal, and I have every confidence that that will be achieved. And I must say thank you also. I appreciate your comments, and I do appreciate the civility. And if that's an indication of what we can have in our meetings, I think that's a very good sign. I do support turf. I understand its value. I understand its opportunities. My family, for several years, has gone to Dublin Kaufman High School to watch their summer regional championships for drum and bugle corps. I get that value. I understand what it brings to a community. I also appreciate what the committee has brought forward, and in fact, their enthusiasm and their initial interest in bringing the project forward. And of course, the volunteers individually and as clubs and organizations who also have the enthusiasm and willingness to try to move this proposal forward. There's been conversation about trusting what our volunteers are doing and their ability to meet commitments. I in absolute terms trust the volunteers and their organizations, and that they will make every effort to meet financial commitments. I know about volunteering. It does get emotional, that. Pat and I, my wife, have been, over a 15-year period, volunteers in this community. I know what it's like to be in these organizations and to plan with these organizations and to raise money with these organizations for multiple purposes. I get it. I understand what it's about, and I trust that they would work very hard. This board has an overarching requirement of fiscal responsibility. And in fact, I see the requirements of board and board members to be essentially four major goals: fiscal responsibility, the development of guiding policies, comprehensive and strategic planning, and continual meetings with Linda Martin on policies. Right, Linda? It'll never end, will it, Linda? With that in mind, and looking at the request that the district provide the financing, borrow the money, I have a fundamental philosophical problem with that. I understand the value of it pragmatically. It will indeed save money to the district in the total interest paid out, whether the loan comes from the boosters, the turf committee, or somebody outside the district. They're going to pay a higher interest than this district would pay. But when I started analyzing where that money would come from, I had issues. And in fact, I inquired, and that being, that a district has legal right to up to a certain percentage of its general fund balance may take a loan, borrow money, without the approval of the voters. And it occurred to me there had to be some fundamental reason for that, that could not have been an arbitrary decision. And so, I inquired as to what would have been the rationale of enacting legislation to give school districts that right. It occurred to me, and the only thing that made sense to me was flexibility, and especially in an emergency condition. Something severe would happen to a building, for instance, and after you pick, you get the insurance comes in, and you've got deductibles and whatever else, what other expenses you have. I have a problem with a high percentage of that flexible fund that I consider for emergency purpose to be dedicated to what I would not classify as an emergency. I had reached out to a number of people who have experience in the industry, whether they're an athletic director or a contractor, subcontractor, that is my business in architecture. And I also reached out to some people who were involved in fundraising for significant charity organizations, and I asked them three questions, as I personally, and I would ask others to consider, the balance of using an emergency fund against pledges. I asked them three questions. In regard to pledges and fundraising, what would be a reasonable expectation as a percentage of payment or capture? What is an appropriate balance of cash in the bank as a ratio to the amount of pledges? And thirdly, what is an appropriate timeline to assume that pledges are going to be repaid, made, that those pledges are going to be committed and made? I believe that there is work to still be done. I'm very open to further dialogue and considerations. Is there a way to discover a way that in fact we can move forward? I hate to use the cliche, but I will, in a win-win situation. But there are certain things that I feel need to be done. I cannot support the current proposal in its present form. What I will consider is if certain performance benchmarks are met. I do not support, notwithstanding comments I've heard, but I still feel it's important for me to say this, that 100 percent of the funds must be brought forward before I would vote to move forward. There needs to be an appropriate balance or ratio of pledges to cash, and for me, that's a minimum of 50/50. I want evidence of that. Any pledge, I want in writing, and I want it notarized. I want a complete tabulation of pledges, who or what group, to what school, and what time. I want a compressed timeline. I have been concerned about the eight years. As Stacy mentioned earlier, a lot of changes can happen in eight years. Leadership, board members, superintendents, treasurers, presidents of booster clubs, members of booster clubs. And I'm looking for an appropriate assumption of risk. That's my goal. And if we can get to a point where, well, let me state, because somebody's going to ask, if it's not eight years, and again, I'm getting this, I'm in agreement with what I'm hearing from people that I've asked. I was, in fact, a couple of people actually gave me the same information. I don't even know if they know each other, clearly with different groups. My goal would be that that pledge time should be three years. I would be okay with five years. And I say five because, number one, I was hearing that from professionals in that industry, and it gets us to a timeline where we're not placing a problem down for future individuals. So, that's where I am, and I appreciate the opportunity to share my thoughts.
I'd like to make a motion.
Before we do that, can I say one thing? Since this is a discussion, I just want to appreciate everyone's work on this board. There seems to be, always be a thing out in the community that we all just smile and nod and agree on things, and I hope you're witness to the fact that that's not the truth, that we spend a lot of time having difficult conversations with each other about difficult issues. And I appreciate the time and effort each of you have put into thinking about this, considering about this, and discussing this, and I just hope it's obvious to the members of the public that we talk and wrestle with these things and don't all just smile and vote yes, so.
I'd like to make a motion to table any votes tonight so that the community and the school board can work together to come up with a compromise solution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Don't you call it over?
Ms. Beazel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Kane?
Yes.
With that...